...of the city of Claussen. It is Monday, November 17th, 2025. It's 7:30 PM, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you're able, please stay, remain standing as we have Pastor Wade Mitchell from Grace Apostolic Church deliver the words of inspiration this evening.
(laughter)
Yes, hi. Thank you for having me today. Two things I think are great as far as there being inspiration. I think a people in a community coming together to do a great work, as I believe all of us are doing here today. At our church tonight, from 5:00 to 6:30, we passed out food to 87 families tonight, and it's great to see people from the city of Claussen doing such a great work like that, and the church doing work in that way, putting their hands to the actual work, feeding and helping people right here in our community. And the other thing I feel like is very inspiring is for us to have a word of prayer, and I'll be praying together, one mind and one accord, so if we could do that. Lord, we thank you, the Lord, for this day, so very thankful, God, for all the people of this wonderful community, God, who are coming together, Lord, who are all doing our best, Lord, for the betterment of the constituents of this great city, God, help us and lead us and guide us, Lord, in all that we do, God, we will give you praise and thanks for it all, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, appreciate it.
Vince, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Malon?
Here.
Mayor Pearl Town Moffett?
Present.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Here.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda for November 17th, 2025, as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Malon?
Yes.
Mayor Pearl Town Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We've approved our agenda, and we'll move to public comment for items on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak to anything on the agenda, we welcome you to the podium. We ask that you give your name and address, and we will allot you three minutes.
George Baumann, Claussen. I'm getting to enjoy this part. My frustration is, in reading your minutes that you're posting for today's or for the special meeting, kind of whitewashed what happened that day. When the people came up and voiced their complaints, none of that was really written into the minutes, okay? We said some nice things, not the truth. One of them was my comment about what's happening with this bond issue, that we have $65 million bond issue, where we're going to fall short by 13 million because of inflation. I would like to have that stated in the minutes, because I want the future to know where the problem came from, from this council, from the current planning commission, okay? And I want to make sure that they understand where the fault's going to lie, because when it hits, everybody's going to be upset, and they'll be pointing fingers, and I don't want them to point fingers at the new council. I want you guys to stand up and take it, okay? Because you're the ones that caused the problem. Thank you. That was less than three minutes.
That was less than three minutes. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for items on the agenda?
Hey, guys. You're appointing seats today, correct? It's a question.
We don't respond to questions during public comments, so I'm sorry, I can't respond to that.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Say your name.
I'm going to. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Theodore James Vernon Jr., Ted Vernon, 760 Shenandoah. I am also on the school council for, excuse me, school board for the city of Claussen, Claussen Public Schools. We would like to state, or at least I would like to say, that Councilman Glenn be appointed. The reason for it, a couple different things, as it relates to our district and the school district, he would be the only councilperson that would have a children still in the school district. He has an extensive history working with, collaborated with the school district. He is the only council member that was on the task force, and our task force is a joint meeting between the council and the school, as well as he has been an extensive supporter of Claussen Public Schools. So as you appoint councilpeople, I think you also received the most votes by someone not receiving a seat, but I would hope that you encourage and look at Mr. Glenn as a future councilperson, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has public comments for items on the agenda? Okay, not seeing anyone come forward. We'll close public comment and move to item seven, which is consideration of approving the minutes of the special city council meeting held on Thursday, November 13th, 2025.
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, November 13th, 2025, be accepted as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, wait a minute. There's an error in the city manager's report. Says city manager Riker and mayor-elect Malon shook hands.
Yeah, we did not, and I wasn't, so, good catch.
That needs to be corrected.
So corrected.
So...
So amended.
There we go.
Support.
Okay. Roll call, please. Unless there are any others.
Mayor Pearl Town Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Malon?
Yes. Thank you. We've approved the special minutes from that meeting with the mentioned adjustments. Moving to the next item, we have consideration of receiving and filing the canvas of votes for the general election held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, as certified by the Oakland County Board of Canvassers.
Madam Mayor, I move the filing of the canvas of votes for the general city election held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, as certified by the Oakland Board of Canvassers be received and filed.
Support.
Any comments on that? Good answer. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Malon?
Yes.
Mayor Pearl Town Moffett?
Yes. Thank you. We have just approved the receiving and filing of the canvas votes for the general city election held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, as certified by the Oakland County Board of Canvassers. And we move to our next item, which is outgoing council member remarks. This is a day that's great for some, and it's a culmination for others, and I'd like to allot you final comments. Councilmember Scott?
Sure. As I had said previous, at a previous meeting, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve on both planning and city council for a short time here in Claussen, and I truly do hope and pray that God continues to bless this city and everyone in this room, and everyone who lives here, and everyone who works here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As my time with this city council comes to a close, I want to take a moment to reflect on what we've accomplished together and what it has meant to serve this community. When I joined this council, my focus was clear: strengthen Claussen as a place where families want to put down roots, where tradition and history are respected, and where our quality of life keeps improving year after year. I'm proud of the progress we've made toward that vision. Over the last four years, we've pushed forward on infrastructure improvements for long-needed repairs to our sewer system, water mains, and street surfaces, advanced major public space upgrades, including our downtown and former school properties, focused on our urban tree canopy, adding new street trees, increasing our biodiversity, and strengthening our long-term green infrastructure, improved city operations, modernizing processes, increasing communication, and supporting staff so they can deliver services more effectively, collaborated with our schools, and supported youth and family programs, because attracting and keeping young families is essential to Claussen's future. These achievements represent thousands of hours of teamwork across council, our city manager, our department heads, our volunteers, and our residents. Nothing happens because of one person. It happens because this city is filled with people who care. I want to especially thank our city administration and our city employees. You carry enormous workloads, often with little recognition, and still show up every day, committed to making Claussen better. Your professionalism and dedication have helped move this city forward in ways many people will never see, but will benefit from years to come. To my colleagues on council, past and present, it has been an honor to serve alongside you. We haven't always agreed, but that's okay. What matters is that we worked hard, we asked tough questions, and we did what we believed was best for Claussen. To the residents, thank you for trusting me to represent you. Claussen's strength is in its people, in its neighborhoods, and in the families who choose to call this place home. And finally, to my family, thank you for your patience, your support, and your understanding. Serving in local government means missed meals, late nights, time away, yet you always gave me the strength and encouragement needed for me to give back to the community we love. I couldn't have done this without you. My commitment to Claussen will remain steadfast. I will continue to serve, to volunteer, and to work for a community that values families, preserves its history, and invests in its future. It has truly been an honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Well, surprising how fast four years goes, but they say time flies when you're having fun, or otherwise. I want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the community for the last four years. I want to especially thank those who supported me over the years, and also that didn't always support me, but we had good, honest, open discussion. As I've said before, we have our disagreements, but I truly believe disagreements should never turn to disrespect. Unfortunately, that didn't always happen. Sometimes it happened, but we'll go for it either which way. But I did want to say also that, well, one of the best decisions I ever made in the last four years was to vote for Mr. Riker to be our city manager. I know it always hasn't been a smooth road, but I think, as Councilman Shepherd has already reflected on, it's been a very productive road. And I guess if I need words for the future council and mayor, I would simply say this: collaboration. You get up here, you're not going to do it by yourself. You're going to have to do it as a group, and there's more of you now than before. I think our city attorney, Mr. Nishai, said it best in one of his opinion letters, where he said, "The interests of Claussen are best served by a collaboration between the city council and the city manager." So if I have any words of inspiration for that, it would be, please engage in collaboration. So, that said, I probably said enough. Again, thank you for the privilege and honor of serving. That's all.
Thank you. I echo many of your comments, Glenn. I think you read my speech, because I was thinking about what brought me to this room, why I stayed in this room, and what it's going to be like to be gone. And as I was thinking of those things, I thought of the different entities that we serve here. We come in as individuals, hoping to represent other individuals who have our like values. That's why I came here. And then you don't know anything when you walk in the door, and you sit, and you hopefully have people around you who have some knowledge, so you can kind of glean off of that and figure out what to do next. And I had a lot of that. I have served with so, so many people. Everyone sharpened me or otherwise, in some form or another, that made who I am today something. And I just want to tell the people I've served with: former mayor W. B. Woolley, Matt Ulbrich, Howie Ayers, Susan Moffett, Mayor Scripture, Kathy Phillips, Lou Sampson, Scott Timlin, for a brief little appointment time, and then also the council member who fell in love and fortunately left us for a while, but is here tonight, because why wouldn't he be here for this great event? And Mr. Sampson, I would like you to put your camera down, because I am not a fan of yours, nor are you of mine, so stop. Thank you. I've also had the pleasure of speaking with Bruce Anderson, Glenn Shepherd, and then many city managers. City managers include Mark Pollak, Rich Haberman, Aaron Irwin, Kathy Leenhouse, Lori Fisher, Scott Sarallo, and Joe Riker. Each one of you shaped this community in some way or another, and all for some good. And I want to thank you for that. But when I thought of the other part of the people, we do things here for the residents, because we are residents, and we're hoping to provide services that are going to be wonderful for all of us. But we don't do those on our own. We are just a body that helps make decisions and pushes the city manager in a way to act within the scope of authority that's defined. We have wonderful people who work in our community, who need your support, who need all of our support. This community is nothing without the people who are the hands and feet of this community every single day. We have Jenny and her team at the Blair Memorial Library, who provide a safe haven for people looking for, to expand their world through books and media, and a place to meet and grow their life experiences. We have a historical museum that is led by Leah and her board members, who work to preserve our local history and present it in a way that charmingly tells the story of our past. We support our DPW, where Trevor and Ryan and the entire team work effortlessly to ensure your roads are cleared from snow. Our parks and trees are maintained, our water mains are fixed in those usually the coldest days of the year, and the services you expect are delivered on the hottest days and on the coldest of days, with no excuses. We support our Parks and Rec team, brought to you by Scott and Lisa, providing meals for seniors, play for toddlers, chair yoga for those who want to try something that fun, karate, bingo, and so, so many other activities that bring the community together. We support our police department, where Chief Bows and her exceptional team of men and women represent the community proudly, and keep us safe when needed, and provide public engagement and support for our many activities. We support our fire department, where Chief Engel and his outstanding team of firefighters protect us from the dangers of fire and other hazards, while also serving this community, engaging in opportunities to serve the community, along with their families, in various philanthropic measures. We support our DDA, who supports our local DDA community, encouraging local businesses through small grants and growth opportunities, while engaging community activities to bridge the gap between residents and our downtown. We support our administration, the first line of defense with our precious residents, which covers Mark, our finance manager, and Lisa, our treasurer, and our financial team that meets with our residents as they pay their water bills and taxes, and create a welcoming environment for two not-so-fun responsibilities that grownups have. Our building and safety department, led by Nick, who services our businesses by assisting with building and safety and issuing permits and ensuring compliance, and also works with our planning commission and ZBA for consistency to set the tone of our community. Our clerk's office, who endure our long meetings, issue dog licenses, run our elections, and many other tasks that our public engages with daily, which is run by Michelle, and the lovely gentleman here this evening, Vince. Each of you impacts this community. Each of you needs the support of a council. Each of you needs the engagement with the community, so don't lose touch of where we are and why we're doing what we do. But this board is important, too, because this board represents the community. The community decided what they wanted for this election. I think we're all quite at rest with it at this point, and happy to see someone else take the helm and move forward. I, for one, will be praying for every single one of you, because as simple as it may seem, sitting in seats there, or sitting at home watching these movies, it's not easy. It's not easy to determine what, how this community is going to move forward. There are a lot of forces that try and tell you what's right and what's not right, and you don't know until you're here. And I would advise you all to do what Howie Ayers told me when I first joined council a long time ago, is to sit back and listen. Don't think you know it all, sit back and listen. And Howie was a very wise man. So coming back to this, what it means to serve and what it takes to serve, Glenn said it, you can't do it without your precious family. And I would like, if you don't mind me embarrassing you, I would like Dave, my husband Dave, and my daughter Alyssa to come forward, and I would like for you guys to call your families forward, because I have something for all of them that I would like them to have, because they have sacrificed greatly for us to have the honor of serving our community. So if you guys could just indulge me for one quick minute, I would appreciate it. I have challenge coins, and I also have these little hearts, and it is the heart of Claussen that is all of you who have given up your time and allowed us. Come on, Tammy, I see you. And Lana, where are you? And I'm sorry, this is like totally not, but can't do it without you. I'm so proud of Alyssa. Nick had an incident this week, so he's not here tonight, unfortunately, but this is Dave and Alyssa who have allowed me to miss those dinners and take calls when it's not necessarily convenient. This is a very precious heart they break. I bought them, and some of them are dead already. And just to remind you that Claussen is a city with a little heart, and that we appreciate the heart that you had in allowing all of us to do this. And this one is for you. It's a challenge coin. Wait, sorry. I was taught how to do this, the right way, so. There you go. So, thank you. Please thank our families, because we could not have done this without them. And to my fellow brothers of the council, this is a challenge coin that says, I can't read it. Can you read it for me?
I didn't bring my glasses.
Oh, come on, who has eyes? This is an old council. We can't read.
Yes, sir.
I'll just tell you that it has, oh, wait, I can't give it to you. Like, I have to give it the right way.
Oh, okay.
Come on, shake my hand. This is the right way.
Oh, I see. Okay.
It says, it has an anchor on it, which is rooted in Christ, and there's a scripture on the backside of it, and it's a reminder that, thank you, we all served with a military man who ran us like a ship sometime, and we appreciate it. So with all of that, I just want to say, thank you to the residents who supported me throughout. Thank you to those of you who challenged me and kept me honest. I've learned something from everyone. I also want to say that I'll just be praying for this community, and I know that challenges some people just know that we serve an awesome God, and he is righteous in all his ways, and he orders our steps, he goes before us, and he fights our battles for us. So, so proud of that. And he gives us rest when needed. I was ready for this rest, so. Mayor Moffett, I trust that you will do your best, and you will serve this community well, and I look forward to seeing you do great things. And just so the audience knows, we have a really precious group of players here tonight. We have former councilmember Sampson, we have Mr. Georges, we have our former mayor, Scripture, and we also have our former city council member who fell in love and came back for this evening. So what an honor to have everyone here tonight. And with that, my council comments are complete.
So, council, if you would, if everyone departing the dais would take your name tag, please, name tape, and join outgoing Mayor Malon and incoming mayor-elect Moffett in front of the crest here in front. We'll get one last departing picture, and we'll start with the swearing and oaths of office.
Okay, okay. I'm just moving my stuff.
Yes, it's okay. That's good, that's good.
Oh, so we're doing it.
You're going to take a picture with everyone outgoing down here?
Okay.
And then we'll swear you out. So, Mayor-elect Moffett, do you have anyone that will be joining you for the oath?
I mean, I have a lot of friends here, and my family, but does your friends come up?
If you'd like, sure. This is your moment.
Right. Dennis, Phil, and Darcy, Maria.
So, if you want to, if, Mayor-elect, if you want people to join you, like, surround you, now's the time to make this personal.
So come up here and stand over here. Come here. My, 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 Claussen.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me?
Yeah.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear or affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
In and for the city of Claussen.
In and for the city of Claussen.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor.
So, Mayor Moffett, if there's any one particular picture you'd like to get with folks right now, go ahead, after your sign.
You know, I left my phone at home, so, Darcy, will you take a pic, or give them your phone, and then you'll send it to me?
Take some pictures of her signing, please, Nick. If everyone else would have their seat, Mayor Moffett, if you would step aside.
Mr. O'Rourke? Raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will affirm, what was the other?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
Charter of the City of Claussen.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
And I will faithfully execute the duties of council member.
In and for the city of Claussen.
In and for the city of Claussen.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Or with it. Or with it. Councilmember-elect Meredith Pelton, you're next.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
In and for the City of Claussen.
And for the City of Claussen.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember-elect Heather Rigby Rankovich, you're next.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
In and for the City of Claussen.
In and for the City of Claussen.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the state of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember-elect Laura Slawinski, you're next.
Everybody? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the council member.
In and for the City of Claussen.
In and for the City of Claussen.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Councilmember-elect Scott Tinlin.
Everybody? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter of the City of Claussen.
Charter of the City of Claussen.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
I'll faithfully perform the duties of council member.
In and for the City of Claussen.
In and for the City of Claussen.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome back.
The rest of you would like to join him for a group picture? The first group picture of the, of the new city council? Okay, mayor and council, if you'd like to take your seats on the dais.
All right. I might need a phone book. All right. So.
You're on item 12, ma'am.
Yep. The next item of business is consideration of council appointments. The ordinance that was put in place several, a month and a half ago afforded us three options for filling the council vacant seats. So I make a motion that we solicit applications for the purpose of filling the council seat. Do I have a second? It's a part. So we can have a discussion. Sorry, I'm out of breath. So we have a motion and a second for purposes of discussion. Let's go ahead and have everyone weigh in on their thoughts of that approach.
Yep. We've received multiple communications from the community, at least I think several of us have. So I would like to open it up to the community to review applications and accept those. I think we've all might agree with that. I don't know. I'd like to open it up to the community to review. So give that an option. That's part of the thing I ran on was listening to the voices of the community. So I wanted to open it up.
Councilmember Pelton, I want to get everyone's name right. Pelton in, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. There we go. Councilmember Pelton.
Yeah, I think we also, I agree that that makes the most sense to get the people that maybe will be very qualified that didn't necessarily run because that was a lot, so.
Okay. Where's? Oh, there you are.
I'm way down here on the left.
Oh, sorry. I was expecting everybody here. Councilmember Pelton.
Support the motion, but that with the, with the ordinance right, that 30-day clock starts today, right?
Correct.
So would we be looking into consideration of, because we have just two meetings to do this. So open up the application process and we have 30 days to complete that, right?
So if it passes, if that motion passes, then we can discuss the specifics of it. We will probably have to schedule some special meetings in there for it. So we'll talk about that after we, if the motion passes.
Okay. I was just thinking the tactical side. We'll be able to process those applications when they come in. I'm fine with that.
Absolutely. Councilmember Slaw, I always say your name wrong. Slawinski, right?
I'm going to teach you how I teach the younger kids when I substitute. Just kidding. Just three words. Slow, in, and then ski.
I said it right there. All right, awesome. All right, Councilmember Slawinski.
I support doing it that way because I also have quite a few people reach out to me to say that that's the, that's what they prefer. And so I would like to honor that and just listening to that. So I'm very open to doing it this way.
Awesome. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Yeah, and I also support this. I see in here it's, you know, we got recommendation from administration to go one way. But taking applications, we, it's two birds, one stone. Anybody who ran and wants to put their name, throw their name in, they can apply. But I'd also like to see any new names out there, too. So for that reason, I support the motion on the table.
I had someone say that select, soliciting for applications, you know, there could be some really great candidates out there who didn't want to go through the arduous task of engaging in a campaign. And I think that's legitimate. So where's the, now where's the, there you are. Could we have a roll call, please?
Who was the second, ma'am? I didn't catch that.
One of them.
Sorry, you can't see me.
We gotta get used to this new configuration.
And the motion was to fill the open council seat with the application process, 30 days. Okay. Mayor Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Slawinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Tinlin.
Yes.
Okay. So I brought a calendar. And keeping in mind that next week is Thanksgiving. Mr. Riker, would it be, when we did it for the Mr. Binkowski's seat, I think we gave like a week for people to turn in applications. So if we were to have applications due by the 24th, and that would give you time to assemble them and present them to the council at the December 2nd council meeting. And then this is, I'm thinking perhaps at the December 2nd council meeting, we could whittle it down to, depending on how many we got, we could whittle it down to our subset of candidates. And then if we were to schedule a special meeting on December 8th for the interviews. And then on December 16th, at the next council meeting, we could select the person and that would bring us in the 30 days. Yep.
If you would allow me some latitude just to replicate the timeframe we used for Councilmember Binkowski, because I'm not exactly sure if it was exactly one day or if it was like eight days.
It was like a, I thought it was like a week, but that's what, so today if we have them due by the, oh, you mean to accumulate and assemble them?
Replicate what we did before for.
Cool, cool.
So.
So as, as long as we can have them for like on the, the council meeting on December 2nd for us to whittle it down, special meeting on the 8th, is everyone cool with that? And then decision on the 16th. Does it work?
Is it at 7:30?
Oh, good question. Council meeting on the 8th. I don't know what everyone's schedule is, so I work from home usually Mondays and Tuesdays, so I can be here. I know we've tried to do like a seven o'clock and to get a little earlier.
You said Monday, the 8th, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Do you want to do Tuesdays since, although I believe we'll be competing with May?
Well, so unfortunately, keeping in mind that I didn't know if I was going to win the election and all my travel from work got scheduled. So I'm in West Virginia on the 9th. So if we could do it on the 8th, that would be super cool. But 7 o'clock, is that good for everybody?
Yeah, it works.
Okay. And that's good for the city, Mr. Riker?
We can do that.
7 o'clock. All right. We have a plan. So people who are interested in applying can reach out to the city clerk's office, get the application, complete that and turn it in. And it needs to be turned in by a date that you're going to post on the website.
Correct.
But 25th-ish. All right. Awesome.
Madam Mayor, permission to speak?
Go ahead.
So Monday nights for me, like tonight is a Monday night. I teach faith formation at our parish for 4th graders.
Okay.
From 6:30 to 8 o'clock. And so I've made provisions to be here tonight and I probably can do the 8th. But just moving forward, usually Mondays aren't good for me.
We'll keep that in mind. I appreciate you sharing that with us. I know that we all have, like, none of us knew we were going to get elected, so 2025 might be a little, we have other stuff. 26 will all know how to plan and like me, myself, too, because I have some travels, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, but you can make the 8th?
I'll have to double check to make sure they can get a sub for me, but I'll definitely give it my best shot.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. The next item on the agenda is consideration for electing a member of council to serve as mayor pro tem. I'd again like to go ahead and make a motion that we appoint Councilmember Aiden O'Rourke as the mayor pro tem. Is there a second for that?
Support.
Support. A discussion again. Councilmember O'Rourke, do you have any comments? Are you willing to serve in that capacity?
Yes, I would, I would accept that. Coming from ZBA, I think I have a little, you know, experience with it. So yes, I would accept it.
Going this way across the dais again, I would say the reason that I am advocating for Mr. O'Rourke is I went back and looked at my emails from when I first started on council. And starting in December of 2023, Mr. O'Rourke was a very active participant in the council. He watched all the meetings and he regularly sent his thoughts, usually chastising me. But the point is, is that he has been very involved in the council with what's going on for several years. And I know a lot of people recently became active after the special council. And I know a lot of people recently became active after the special council, or the special election, but he's got some history and some information. His, his thoughts were always well, well thought out and based in true, in, in facts and research, and that's why I would support him. Councilmember Peltonin.
I will just keep it short, that it's nothing personal against Aiden. I think the honor of being mayor pro tem should go to one of the four-year term winners, earners, electors. But I just want to put my two cents in, but I think Aiden will do a great job, but yeah, thanks for asking.
I appreciate you for that. Councilmember, now I'm going to get your name right. Reikovic, right?
It's Rinkovich.
Rinkovich. Councilmember Rinkovich.
No, that's okay. Nope. I'm, I'm in support of Aiden. Gotten to know him over the, the election cycle, and his time, I'm still getting to know more about the planning. I was definitely vested more on the council side, but getting to know him on the planning side. So like, learning more as I have about mayor pro tem seat, I'm, I'm good with understanding more of the, it's a two-year cycle, so we'll review it again in two years and see where we're at, at the two-year cycle, now that I know that's that.
That's a great point, just for everybody's application, right? It's from now until the next election.
I understood that a little bit better. I'm comfortable with that, so.
So. Councilmember Slowinski.
I have to get used to moving up here.
No, it's so hard getting used to where we're sitting.
So I like that, I think both of the candidates, not candidates, sorry, I think both of them would do a great job, but I know we're speaking about Aiden right now. I like that Aiden has a history with the ZBA, and he's helped me, he was very helpful during my campaign, answered questions when I didn't know, you know, what to do, and we worked well together. So I support Aiden being the mayor pro tem.
Councilmember Tinlin.
Yeah, I, I go ahead and support as well. I had the same experience on the planning commission side with Aiden, and we had lots of interesting and good dialogue on the planning side, so I have no problems with him taking the mayor pro tem area and serving.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Yes.
Councilmember Peltonin.
No.
Councilmember Rinkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Slowinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Tinlin.
Yes.
Yes. All right. We have named Councilmember O'Rourke as the mayor pro tem. Our next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of appointing a council member to the joint task force between the City of Claussen and the City of Claussen Public Schools. Would someone like to make a motion to either volunteer or nominate someone?
I'll move to nominate Heather Rinkovich.
I'll second that.
Now everyone's making me nervous, how to say it.
Well done. So let's go ahead and have a conversation again about that. Councilmember Tinlin, you have any thoughts on that?
No, I'll be neutral on that, since my daughters went all went to Shrine High School in grade school. But, yeah, I think it would be a good fit. I, I support the Board of Education and the school community, so I have no problems with that.
Councilmember Slowinski.
I would like to hear a little bit more from Heather about what her background is in doing a good job in this position.
Sure.
Councilmember Reikovic, go ahead.
Yeah. Is it okay if I speak on that a little bit now? So beyond the obvious, so I am a Claussen School District alum, so obviously I have a tie that way, but professionally, I have over 20 years in education experience, student service experience related to higher education, but specifically to student services. So I would love to continue somehow bridging and getting back to somehow finding a way of utilizing that experience of education and my council seat and bridging those types of skills with the school district. So if there's some way I can work with Claussen Schools and utilizing my professional experience of education in any way possible on this council seat, on this dais, I would love to be able to do that. So when I saw this come up, I'm more than happy to fill this seat if the council sees that as a good fit. So Claussen Public Schools also gave me my start in higher education. So I was a co-op student my junior and senior year back in the 90s, and that is how I got my start in higher education. So they got me a job through Central Michigan University's off-campus programs, just working in the back mailroom, and I worked my way up as a co-op student in that program, and Claussen Public Schools helped me get a free education through Central Michigan University, both my bachelor's and most of my master's degree, and then went on to get my career that way. So, yeah, paying it forward, too. So, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Peltonin.
Oh, I think, I think Heather would be great at it. She seems really excited.
Yeah, she seems excited, and she's willing to do it, and she's enthusiastic and has some great ties to the school system, so I think she's a great fit. Councilmember O'Rourke.
I have a more administrative question. What is, what is this position exactly? I don't know if I can ask anybody here.
There was probably something I should have read here, but I'm still very nervous.
Or can I ask Mr. Riker?
Go ahead and ask Mr. Riker.
So the cover sheet is typically, the summary and rationale comes from the administration. So two years ago, at the first joint meeting of the Claussen Public School Board and the city council, a proclamation was approved for a collective benefit and focus on the continuation of improving the Claussen community. As part of the proclamation, a formal task force was established. The intent of the, the intent of this agenda item is to identify a member of the new council to serve in that capacity. The Claussen Public School Board is considering approving the January 12th, 2026 date as the joint meeting date as of this evening, because they are having a meeting as we speak.
So that's the person, we, we don't all go to that joint meeting, it's just we send?
No, no, actually, actually, on the 12th, you all will be in attendance.
Okay.
But as a member of the task force, you will join myself, the superintendent, and I believe it's Mr. Ted Werner, who's their representative, and what we'll do is we'll help refine potential agenda items for that and other ways going forward as to how the school and the district, how the district and the city administration can collaborate.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would support Heather's nomination to that. All the things you said are great, and you'd make a good fit there, so yeah, support that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Peltonin.
Yes.
Councilmember Rinkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Slowinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Tinlin.
Yes.
Mayor Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
The next item on our agenda is public comment. Before we open that, Mr. Nushai, I would, I know.
The baby's here.
Well, I need to, I need to get that chair, I'm going to move it. Anyhow, so historically, it's been three minutes, but that's a matter of practice more than anything else. Is that correct?
Somewhere in our procedure, we do have an allotment. It may have been a motion, but that's a great thing.
So if I were to make a motion to change the allotment for public comment to four minutes, we could have a motion, or do you want to take, do you want to take a, a meeting and get back to us on tomorrow's and let us know?
If possible, I'd.
All right. So if you could let us know that, and where it's codified, and what we would do to change that?
Yes, ma'am.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. All right. So in the meantime, we will now have public comment for items not on the agenda. I welcome you to the podium. You'll be allotted three minutes, and if anyone has anything to say, please come forward. Seeing no one move. Oh, go ahead.
Cindy Peltonin brought here Claussen. Congratulations to you all. We're very pleased that you're able to serve in this capacity, and that we have a more representative, at least age-wise, representation of our city on this council, so I appreciate that. We have 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, so it represents our community a little more diversely. One thing I would really recommend, having spent 22 years on the Claussen Board of Education, when we first started, the Board of Education didn't want to spend money on their own professional development because it was taking money from the kids. And we had to really fight tooth and nail, but we finally got it so that people could go to the Michigan Association of School Boards and be trained for this job that comes with no training. So I would encourage you all to, as soon as you are able, to sign up for the classes offered by Michigan Municipal League, because not only do they have classes, they have conferences. I think the first one is early December, the 4th or the 7th, I can't remember, but it will help you become more comfortable in the processes, but also the most valuable thing is what you find out from people who are there from other cities. We used to think, oh, poor little us Claussen, we're so small, we can't do anything, but we're not. You know, we're halfway in the 800 school districts in the state, and you could learn from other people on how to pass millages and how to do things collaboratively. So again, congratulations, but I hope that you all really make a point to pursue that education, so you'll be the most effective you can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Friendly crowd.
I mainly wanted to come up here, besides congratulating you all, I'd asked the last council if they could get a microphone from this, like, decade, so we could hear you. I know my father's in here, he's like, what are they saying? So please, 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 do something kind, so we can all hear you, and everybody on YouTube could hear you, but thank you again for serving. You guys are awesome. I appreciate you.
Thank you. I'm trying to be really loud. Okay. Hearing no one else come forward, before we call for a motion for adjournment, I'd like to give each council member, we had the outgoing council member the opportunity to thank their supporters and family, and I'd like to go, starting with Councilmember Tinlin, to give you the opportunity to say what you want to say on this auspicious occasion.
No three or four-minute restriction. No, I'll keep it short. I'd just like to take, thank all the voters in the community that allowed me to serve again for a second time. You know, I'm going to serve as I campaign, I'm going to serve above self. You'll see me very active in the community, and look forward to working with all of these fresh faces, too. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Slow, yeah. Councilmember Slowinski.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody that helped me with my campaign. There are a lot of you out there, including a special shout-out to my daughter, Sophia, who pretty much was my campaign manager, that's what I'm going to call her. Her and her friends helped hang door hangers, she helped market me at school, and she was just a huge part, I think, of why I'm up here today. She's always pushing me forward to be a great person, and to volunteer, and just to have integrity, and I just wanted to give her a shout-out, because I am so proud of her for being who she is. So that's pretty much it. I, I promised to do my best up here, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knows and remembers that we're up here to listen to you, and that was a big part of my campaign. So I'm always available, cell phone, via text, email, and, and that's it. So thank you very much. I appreciate your support, and I am going to do the best that I can for you.
Well, I came into these chambers March 17th, and I had no idea then that I would be sitting up here now. I had no, no thought or desire to be sitting up here, but over the past few months, so many things evolved. Most, one of the biggest things that came out of that was Claussen voices, i.e. all of the voices here in this audience and at home. So thank you to every Claussen voice, every vote, every voice, no matter if you voted for those up here on the dais, just those of you that got out and voted, period, and used your voice. I hope you continue to do so. I hope you continue to stay engaged. Please, 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 don't, don't slide back into apathy. Stay engaged. Keep showing up to these meetings. Get engaged with a board, a commission. Write to us. Just use your voice. I, I want to hear from you. Email us, message us. Come to public comment. We're going to make it easier and more accessible in any way possible, whether it's with microphones, like Sean mentioned. Another one of my backgrounds is accommodations, ADA accommodations, so anything we can do to make it more accessible for folks to get their voice heard and across, I, please, please reach out, let us know. We want to hear from you. So your voice matters, and I can't thank, there's so many people I want to thank, but it's really all of you. So thank you, thank you. Thank you to my beloved husband for putting up with all of the very late nights, all of the research, just everything. Thank you to Jamie. Thank you to Jill. Thank you to my girls, you know who you are. Love you all, and yeah, thank you all. Again, use your voice, and your voice matters, your vote matters. Stay engaged. Well, I would like to thank my mom and my sister, Rebecca Peltonin and Cindy Peltonin. My mom was very visible by my side with a lot of things, kind of showing me the ropes the way, but my sister, you might have seen in a minivan driving around that had my Meredith Peltonin on the side, and she was like my liaison on the South Side, but with all the schools and also the, the door hangers, and my postcards were designed by Rebecca, and that's her first time doing that, so that was really cool. And, yeah, I mean, I have a lot of people to thank, so I won't go on that list, but those, those two. So thank you.
Perfect. So I'd like to give a shout-out to my boys who hopefully are watching from Chicago, Jimmy and his wife Megan, and Danny's and his fiancee Abigail. Thank you for your love and support. I want to thank my boss and all my coworkers for putting up with me droning on and on and on about it since June. They were incredibly supportive, and some of them even came out and did door hangers and came to my events, so thank you for your patience and support. Then, of course, my neighbors, Bill and Darcy, Maria, Pat and Dennis, for, again, listening to me draw on and on and on about it and being supportive and helping any way you can, and all the community, the new people I met. Just thank you from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate all the support and encouragement.
I have a ton of people to thank. First off, my beautiful fiancee over there, Katie, my campaign manager, designed all my stuff, so thank you. But just like coming as a, you know, an engineer who just loves a city, you know, so many people up here, so many people out there, Sean, Cindy, all you guys up here have kind of helped me meet so many wonderful people, and be able to listen to you guys, and I'm just excited to bring a new perspective. And so, yeah, I just want to thank just the community that's welcomed, you know, the ideas I have and that you elected me, so thanks, everyone.
All right. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
No, I like this.
Did someone, did someone make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Support.
Awesome. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rinkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Slowinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Tinlin.
Yes.
Mayor Moffett.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Yes.
Councilmember Pelton?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone who came out. I need a better chair.